We are practicing healthy behaviors in this room this morning. Commissioners have plexiglass barriers between them. Staff and presenters are socially distancing and wearing masks. This morning, I'd like to provide a brief overview of yesterday's July 28th County Commission Staff Meeting. Yesterday, County Manager Tom Stoltz provided an update on the COVID-19 data dashboard. Cases in Sedgwick County continue to trend up. Hospitalization data has been updated as well, shows the capacity of our two regional hospitals. Patients may not just be Sedgwick County residents. There has been discussion about removing the recovery numbers from the data dashboard. We are constantly monitoring and improving the dashboard. Glenda Martin, Director of Department of Corrections, provided a Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board update that three positions need to be filled. There are specific guidelines regarding gender and diversity qualifications in order to be a board member. Glenda provided her recommendations out of 10 applicants, and the Board of County Commissioners will make a decision on filling those vacancies at a later date. Mike Papoun, our County Counselor, provided an update on the state lobbyist. Sedgwick County has had an in-house government relations person that does a majority of the lobbying for the organization for many years. Sedgwick County currently has a one-year contract with Jason Watkins with the Watkins Public Strategies. Mr. Papoun requested a decision on whether to put out an RFP or stay with Watkins Public Strategies by October 2020. However, there was direction from the Board of County Commissioners to move ahead with Watkins Public Strategies. We also had an update on the election building. There is currently $3 million in the CIP for 2021 for relocation and necessary remodel to permanently house the Sedgwick County Elections Office. The Elections Office needs space for approximately 28,000 square feet. Sedgwick County is working with Steve Martins of NAI Martins to identify a location, and to date, nine locations have been identified. Yesterday, three locations were identified to be further reviewed for total cost analysis. We do have an elections coming up this Tuesday, August 4th. Voters can vote by mail-in ballot or by visiting any advanced location now through Saturday or the Elections Office by Monday at noon, or your designated polling site on Tuesday, August 4th. Today's special meeting will focus on a discussion of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act. So, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya, and welcome, everybody, for tuning in. Again, this is a special meeting. We normally do not meet on the last Wednesday of the month, but based on some timing of some items that we need to review, and I think we're going to not have a meeting next Wednesday, so the first Wednesday in August. So, that is why we're having the meeting today. So, again, welcome, everybody. Being in a special meeting, we'll just get right to it. Call the order of business to call the meeting to order. And, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Chairman Meitzner.
President. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item A, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager, here to talk us through this agenda item. I'm not sure what the record is for special meetings in a year, but I'm confident that we'll break it this year, so this won't be our last special meeting. I thank the Commission for agreeing to meet today to talk about some important issues. On the CARES update today, there's actually going to be four sub-items. The main item that we're going to spend the majority of time talking about is rapid testing options for Sedgwick County. Dr. Elizabeth Avila is here today to walk us through that, so she will go first. Then Lindsay will take the podium and talk about funding options for, potentially for nightclubs, which was discussed in last Wednesday's meeting, and we promise to bring back further data and information at this Wednesday's special meeting, so she will report out on that. She will also report out on school CARES distributions and some options for the Commission to consider along that line, and then she will also give us her general update on the CARES budget. So, first off, this morning, Dr. Avila will talk about testing, and I'll just kind of lay a framework here of the history of COVID testing in Sedgwick County, it seems like for years, but in reality, about four months. At the onset of the virus back in March, we all remember that testing was important, but we couldn't get commodity and supply, so we were very limited. Through the help of some local partners, we were able to finally get commodity, and we began to test. But, as a community, our infection rate was relatively low, so the demand for tests was relatively low. We stayed there until the last month and a half or so, when the state began to open back up and our county began to open back up, which drove the infection rates back up, and the demand for testing has grown exponentially. We have a current capacity in the County Health Department with the current staffing to run about 200 tests per day. That's a 1,000 test rate per week. The community capacity, it's all of our other partners, all of our medical partners around the community, have a capacity historically to run about 800 tests per day, which is 4,000 per week. So, as a group, we have the capacity of 4,000 tests per week, of which about 25% of that is county. We've taken steps in the last few days, and Lindsay will report out on this, and Tim will also, to talk about the acquisition of a couple of machines, which will allow Sedgwick County to increase our daily capacity from 200 to 700 tests with current staffing. That would increase the community capacity to about 6,500 tests per week, and that's not knowing what the rest of the community is going to do, not knowing what our medical partners are going to do. So, the discussion we have today is to, first of all, talk about the reality of testing as it sits today, and talk about what our best guess for the need of the community is going to be regarding testing capacity. The reality of the testing technology today, and Dr. Avila will get into this in more detail, is the comparison between PCR testing, which is the viral test, antigen test, and antibody test, and there's a tremendous amount of data and information out on the Internet regarding all of these tests. But it seems today, and we've been very patient, and we waited what seemed like a long time, really six weeks, to wait for a better technology to surface, which would allow for easier testing, faster testing, less painful testing, to go away from the nasal-pharyngeal swab technology. That has not happened yet, and here we sit at the end of July, and we're going to have to make decisions to move forward, because it's a little bit of a race against time here to get a rapid test process up. She will talk about some of the differences of that and entertain questions regarding that. Important things to remember as we talk through this is the ability, the stand-up time. How long will it take to get equipment in? Even with our Panther orders, the machines that the County Health Department ordered, we're looking at a wait time of about six weeks, because everybody in the country wants these machines, will stand it up, get it operational, but it will be six to eight weeks before we can do so. So, stand-up time, as we consider other options, is an important fact to think about. Access to materials and reagents. We have to have access to materials and reagents. There's no sense standing machines up or getting capacity if we can't get the commodity to run it, so we need to consider that in this process. Speed of the test. We all can relate to this. We're waiting four, five, six, 10, 11 days to get test results back. That's unacceptable for all of us. So, the speed of these tests and how fast we can spin results is critical as we move forward in this process. The quality of the test. We want the test to be high in accuracy, and Dr. Avila will talk about two types of component regarding accuracy, but we clearly want something in the science world as close to 100% as we can obtain. Administration of the process is important. The testing is one of three parts of the process. We have to sign people up, get people organized to come in and test, then the test happens, and then we have to get timely results back to them somehow. So, we need to take that into consideration as well, as we begin to talk about numbers and potential for the community. And then sustainability. There's a lot of information out about vaccines and when this is going to turn a corner, but I think we all realize that we'll be in the testing of COVID business through 2021. So, we want sustainability in whatever process it is we choose today, as we move forward with the decision from the Commission. It's also important to remember that testing capacity has a direct relationship to the rate of infection within the community. That's why we were in such a good place during April and May, when our infection rate was so low, the demand for testing was relatively low. We've seen, as the infection rate has now exponentially gone up, that our demand for testing has gone up, and we have to react to that. So, hopefully, over time through community behavior, we'll see that infection rate go down, which should reduce the amount of demand for testing. That's important to remember as we talk about capacity and how much additional testing capacity we want to acquire. So, with that, I will introduce Dr. Elizabeth Avila. She has a lot of initials after her name, Ph.D. She has a master's in public health. She is the Associate Professor in the Department of Population Health at KU Med Center, and she's accompanied today by our Health Officer, Dr. Mans, to talk us through her presentation. So, Dr. Avila, please.
Good morning, Doctor, and welcome to Sedgwick County.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Mr. Stoltz, thank you. That was very thorough and a great introduction to the topic. I'm Elizabeth Avila. I'm now a professor. I just got promoted. I am at the University of Kansas in the Department of Population Health at the School of Medicine here in Wichita. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about the proposals that have been received up to this point, and before I do, I want to get a little bit of background, just to provide a little bit of a description as to the context, so when we get into some of these proposals and some of the terms that this makes sense. So, when we talk about testing for COVID, we need to think about collection, and we need to think about analysis, as two separate components. So, for collection methods, the CDC recommends the following types of specimens. Nasopharyngeal is the one that is the most commonly discussed and was promoted as the gold standard. It is, now, these are all considered acceptable. Notice that saliva is not on this list. There are three types of tests, and I want to briefly describe the three. There are two that are for diagnostic purposes. That's viral, and this is also known as molecular, also known as PCR, and I'll describe each of these just a bit. There's also an antigen test, and I'll describe that a little. And then, those are the two that are considered diagnostic. There's also an antibody test, but that is not a diagnostic test. This is also known as serology, so we'll discuss that as well. But there are two that are for diagnostic for the virus. So, let's start with viral. So, viral, also, again, molecular or PCR. Sample of mucus is taken from the nose or throat, and the specimens are delivered to a lab. This is what we are most familiar with, I believe. About three to seven days is the average turnaround time for the entire process, not just the lab. An antigen test. This was approved in May, and this is also using a nasal cavity, using a swab. This is considered a rapid test. It can be in less than two hours even. The advantage of this is that it is less uncomfortable for collection purposes, and the other advantage is speed of the test. So, that is a real advantage. Antibody, again, this is not a diagnostic test. This is a blood test, and this identifies if there has been any type of antibody that has been generated in the body as a result to fight off the virus. So, what can be determined from this is if the individual has had the virus at some point. It is not an indication of whether the person has the virus currently. So, in terms, again, of diagnostic, it does not serve that purpose. Okay, so when we get to analysis methods. Viral, again, the PCR is what we talk about the most. It detects genetic material, so it is really a solid, it's a solid indicator of whether the virus is present in the body. It is PCR because it's polymerase chain reaction, and it amplifies the viral DNA. So, if it's there, it's easier to detect, because it basically shines a light, a bright light on it. And a positive test means that the person is infected. An antigen test, this is different. This identifies proteins to determine if the virus is present. It is less accurate than the viral or the PCR test. It is not officially FDA-approved, so there's that. The antibody test, again, it's a blood-based test, and it has, it uses the protein as an antigen, so it's similar in that way to an antigen test. Okay, so a few considerations. Viral, again, the gold standard here is the real-time reverse transcription polymerase chain reaction, or PCR. It is a diagnostic test. It is the most common test used for COVID-19 for diagnostic purposes, and it is considered the most reliable. And it can produce false negatives if it is not collected correctly. That is why we want to make sure that we have folks who are collecting the samples An antigen test, also diagnostic. It doesn't necessarily identify all active infections, because it is not as sensitive, and I'm going to talk about what sensitivity and specificity are. As Mr. Stoltz referred to, we're looking for accuracy. We want to make sure that we're actually testing for the virus. Positive result from the antigen test can be accurate, but there is a higher chance of false negatives. I'll say that again. There's a higher chance of false negatives with an antigen test, so we'll talk about what that means and the implication for that. A negative test, and this is really an important point, negative tests or negative result does not mean that it is a negative. It needs to be, and this is in all of the descriptions for an antigen test, any type of antigen test, the description says that you have to confirm it with a PCR test prior to making any treatment decisions or to prevent possible spread. And so, what's that next step? PCR, right? So, if you get a negative test with an antigen test, that does, a negative result, excuse me, from an antigen test, that does not mean the person is negative. It needs to be redone with PCR analysis, which is the initial test that we were talking about. So, please.
Yes, I'd like to go and just, you want us to talk back and forth when we have questions as you're...
I would be happy to talk back and forth.
Okay. So, this is kind of what I was referring to yesterday, and I talked, I don't know if you heard the meeting yesterday or not, but I didn't describe it exactly right, because I'm not a medical professional, obviously, but the antigen test, if someone has symptoms and they have the antigen test and it comes back initially, again, with rapid response, the negative result, they will run that sample, the same sample, through PCR processes. Is that correct?
That is a question I do not have the answer to. I don't know what the local process is, if it's the same sample or if it's a different sample.
Okay. I talked to some people yesterday afternoon, and again, once again, I don't know exactly what the practices are here in Wichita, but I'm hearing that this is something that is done, and Dr. Norman, I guess, also talked about this a lot at KDHE briefings as well. All right, well, thank you for the information. I appreciate that.
Sure. Thanks for the question. Okay, so an antibody test, that should not be used to diagnose COVID-19. It just doesn't diagnose it. It can miss the active infections, because it takes time for a body to create those antibodies to fight off the virus, and it can show whether the person has had the virus at some point in time. So, some tests do produce high numbers of false positive results, and the real purpose and the importance of the concept around the antibody test is that, and the reason it's so complicated is that we don't really know the salience of the antibody test at this point, because we don't know what it means. If you have had the virus, it doesn't, scientists don't know yet if that means that we're immune to getting the virus again, or if you're able to help other people, for instance, like through donation of blood. So, it's a really big question right now as to what it actually means. So, antibody tests, not diagnostic, and have some large questions around them. So, let's talk about that accuracy that Mr. Stoltz was referring to. So, how do we define accuracy? Well, in this type of world where we're looking at epidemiology, we're trying to understand this condition, we are, we think about positive and negative in terms of having a condition, or in this case, the virus, and then we also have a positive and negative in terms of what the test is. So, if we're wanting to understand, for instance, the benefit of PCR analysis, or the accuracy of PCR, or the accuracy of an antigen test, we often have this two-by-two table that we generate, and the idea of this is that we are looking at those who have the condition and those who do not have the condition objectively, and then we're trying to determine whether these folks have the infection or not, or the condition, through a test, and that is a positive or a negative result. So, if we see, let's just look at those folks who have the condition. Those folks who have the condition and they test positive, that's considered a true positive. This makes sense, right? Those who have the condition and test negative, that's considered a false negative. Now, in my opinion, from a population health perspective, this is the most dangerous, because we have somebody who has an active infection, and we're telling them, nope, you're fine. You don't have anything. So, that is, a false negative is extremely dangerous. Now, let's look at those who do not have the condition. So, folks who do not have the condition but are tested positive for the, from the test, that is a false positive result, whereas a true negative result is somebody who doesn't have the condition and obviously tests negative for the condition. So, does this make sense generally? Okay. So, when we calculate sensitivity, we're only looking at the column on the left-hand side. So, among those who have the condition, we're looking at the true positive, where the denominator is all of those who have the condition, so A plus C. So, if we're calculating it, which I won't make you do, it would be A on top of A plus C. So, that's how you calculate sensitivity. We want the test to be sensitive, because we want to be able to detect it if it's there. So, in my opinion, that's the best, if we can get something with very strong sensitivity. Let's talk about what specificity is. So, specificity is very similar in that we're looking at a column, and we're only looking at those who do not have the condition this time, and this time, we're looking at the true negative as what's on top, so D, and then that is over B plus D. In other words, everybody who does not have the condition. Does that make sense? Okay, so, specificity, I like to think about this as, I'm sick. I am going to the doctor, and the doctor gives me a test, and it's not very specific, so I might have the flu in reality, but the test says, yep, you have COVID. Does that make sense? So, specific helps us discern what is, what is the actual problem, whereas sensitivity is, are you sick, basically? So, that is sensitivity and specificity. In an ideal world, we'd like it to be 100% for both, right? That would be lovely. And quite frankly, I believe that's what Mr. Stoltz was referring to, that we're waiting for this technology, because there is, there are new tests coming out, as you know, all of the time, and they really have some spectacular results that we're continuing to prove on the science. So, with that as a background, I'm going to launch into the two proposals that have been submitted for the CARES Act funding. One is from Wichita State University, and that is through their lab, and then that is the MDL Molecular Diagnostic Laboratory. And then, the other that is on the right-hand side is Ascension via Christie. So, I will consistently have Wichita State on the left and Ascension on the right, so it's consistently presented the same way. So, when we're looking at the applications, the objective for Wichita State University is very consistent with the objective for Ascension. That is to provide high throughput, low-cost, quick-response COVID-19 screening. So, we want to be able to figure out, do we have it? Ascension, very similar. They indicate that by combining Ascension via Christie's expertise with expertise, with financial support through Sedgwick County, through the CARES Act funding, we believe we can better serve our community through this pandemic. So, what are the proposed activities? They're very similar. Both obviously involve testing. You'll see here that the MDL, or Molecular Diagnostic Laboratory at Wichita State, is what they're wanting to create as a regional asset for the county. And you will see here, this is the first indication from Wichita State of one of the questions, one of the many questions that have arisen from both of these applications that will be up for your consideration, and that is, they're proposing prepaid bulk rate of $60 per test, and that's something I will come back to in a bit. Ascension is wanting to purchase equipment and install it in addition to also doing the testing. So, that's just a little bit different, because they are requesting some funding for an equipment for a PCR analysis. Okay, so, the question of, are these accepted methodologies that they've proposed? I'd love to be able to answer that, and yet, this is a second area that the applications are a little bit lacking. Wichita State University in this point, excuse me, at this point in their application have provided information to indicate that it is going to be their real-time reverse transfer PCR analysis, and they have indicated that it is sensitive, and they have all of the different types of collection strategies that are approved by CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, in addition to saliva testing that they're wanting to then also launch into. They do not indicate what the machine is, so that is a limitation, because I can't give you information about that. I will note, however, that they have, they had originally, in their first proposal, asked for funding for that equipment, and they went ahead and purchased it anyway. They did not wait for that. Ascension via Christie did propose this new Alinity M system and its Abbott system, and I will talk a little bit about the sensitivity and specificity of that. So, you'll see, there's information, again, Wichita State University says it's sensitive, but they didn't give us the information to know how sensitive it is of a test, and they hint at also specificity, but again, we don't have that information. With Ascension, their test that does have information, they propose in the website accurately, so this was not inaccurate on their part, indicates that it's 100% sensitivity and 100% specificity. Research suggests that it's actually 93%, so we went to the academic literature and identified that sensitivity there is 93%, specificity is 100%. Again, as with many tests, they do indicate that a negative test do not preclude this and should not be the sole basis for decision-making and treatment. Okay, so, some logistics. When it comes to Wichita State, they are proposing that it be a little bit more community-based. So, they would like to start with having funding to go to providing materials for healthcare providers, so that they are off-site, so in their own facilities, they are going to be collecting samples and sending them to a laboratory, to the Wichita State Laboratory. And they have also proposed that if the demand increased, that they would be willing to also offer a mobile drive-through. Ascension has proposed a walk-in testing plan, and they have a design concept for In terms of the testing capacity and expected output for the equipment, Wichita State University, the capacity is about 5,000 tests per week, and they have also... And they have also indicated that they could add additional shifts. Both institutions offered a Monday-through-Friday schedule, but Wichita State said that they would be happy to ramp up if needed. The expected, so that's the capacity of what the machine can do on that schedule. Expected, they're proposing here that it would be about 1,000 tests per week, and that they would gradually increase that over the first few weeks. This is important, because there is a point at which, in this application, Wichita State actually proposes that it's going to be significantly less. And we're also going to talk about the timeline of making this happen. Because Wichita State is very clear in their proposal that they are proposing 100,000 tests. So 100,000 tests, and a reminder that this funding ends on the 30th of December of 2020. Ascension capacity is what they've provided. It turns out to be about 5,400 per week. The expected, they are proposing about 900 per day, so that's about 4,500 per week. So this is a planned monthly output of 18,000. However, later in the proposal, Ascension indicates that their output monthly will be 20,000. So some inconsistencies in, as to what the total output, and there is no information. Ascension does not indicate that they plan on having a certain number of tests over that period of time through December. The results, it's very important, obviously, that the results are shared with the people who have been tested, so that they know their results. Wichita State, when we asked them the information about how the results would be shared with those who were tested, they indicated that the results would be sent to the ordering physician or the healthcare provider, and through a text to the patient, and that they will know as quickly as possible. Ascension reported that their testing results would be provided to the county, and that results would be provided electronically in aggregate. They did not indicate, they did not address the question directly as to how the patient, or if the patient, would be notified. So remember, they were the drive, or the walk-in clinic. Okay. So who will be tested in these proposals? Wichita State says that it's whoever the healthcare provider suggests is needing testing, whether they're symptomatic or asymptomatic. That's up to the healthcare provider. And that is pretty much consistent with Ascension, other than the fact that it's a healthcare provider, this would be symptomatic and asymptomatic, that it would be determined on one's own. Both indicate the population served would be all ages. In terms of how, when we asked, how do you plan to serve those in greatest need, Wichita State's proposal indicates that they would offer the test at cost, to make it as feasible for as many people as possible. And Ascension indicated that they would accommodate populations, all populations, and be, their facility would be ADA compliant. The turnaround time is consistent for both applications, 24 to 48 hours. In terms of where the analysis would be conducted, both plan to be in the county in Wichita. Wichita State's analysis lab is going to, is at South Oliver, and the Ascension lab is through AMS, which Ascension owns. Terms of who pays, this gets into some of the interesting points of these proposals. So Wichita State, and this is verbatim from their proposal, the proposal seeks CARES funding to provide bulk pricing for prepaid. Again, prepaid is a question mark that you need to be cognizant of, as to whether that's even possible with CARES funding. Prepaid testing services to be conducted in high-throughput facility, and that CARES funding will pay for the testing kits and laboratory services to process and report testing outcomes. So the way that, that this is all covered through CARES funding in the application, in Wichita State's application. In terms of Ascension Via Christi, they indicate that there will be a test fee of $55 for the test process, for $5.36 for swabbing, and that those fees would be billed to Cedric County. So that's, again, another question that is raised, as to what is this in reference to? Is this in addition to the CARES funding, or what the billing looks like? Also to note, Ascension Via Christi also has, later in their budget, that the test is $66, so $60 for the test processing, and $6 for the swabbing. So it's inconsistent within the same proposal. We asked what their plan was to involve Cedric County Health Department. And Wichita State says that all positive results will be reported to KDHE, and that they'll work as requested with the Cedric County Health Department. Ascension Via Christi indicates that we, basically, we've had an eight-year track record and will continue to collaborate. The expected outcomes, what each of them are expecting will occur. Wichita State has a goal to suppress the COVID to less than one daily new case per 100,000 people, which is a relatively common metric to get into the green zone, according to Harvard. Increasing testing capacity, they propose, will address the following problems around, you know, making basically our economy stay open, businesses, schools, and public services. Ascension Via Christi has metrics, proposes metrics that are more specific to their facility in terms of specificity of the equipment and safety. And they do indicate that they are proposing access to testing increases 50% greater than baseline, and they indicate that that baseline is obtained from Cedric County. They do not, however, indicate what that date is, or what that, that number is. So that is also a point that would be useful for clarification. In terms of monitoring outputs and processes, we asked them, how are you going to be evaluating the process throughout? And their monitoring at Wichita State, the daily testing throughput, the test turnaround time, and also the percent and number of positive and not detected cases. Ascension has information about their quality improvement plans, and how these, those, those same quality improvement plans will be implemented and reported on a monthly basis to Cedric County. Very similarly, the evaluation plan is the same as the expected outcomes for Ascension, whereas Wichita State indicates that 12 months after operating, they plan to do a 360 review. In terms of compliance, there are a number of factors that need to be considered for compliance, as you know. CLIA compliance, HIPAA, and privacy confidentiality and whatnot. Wichita State, verbatim, provided this information. Ascension included this information, in addition to some human subjects protections, which is not applicable, because it is not research. We asked them to describe their plans for sustainability. So they've purchased the equipment, or they plan to use this, these resources. What are they planning on doing with the equipment after, and the resources after? Wichita State University reports that they will add testing capacities, or, excuse me, capabilities, based on the needs of the community. This is another point that I'd like to elevate as a potential question and conversation point. They would like to provide testing all throughout 2021 and 2022 as needed. And that is a question, from my perspective, as to where are they going to be receiving funding for that? Because the funds need to be spent, the CARES Act funds need to be spent by the 30th of December for 2020. They also propose that the equipment can be adapted to be used for other, other viruses like influenza. In terms of Ascension Via Christi, they have indicated, similarly, that the, a lot of these, the equipment, for instance, that they're proposing, that's part of their application, can produce valid results for seven to eight years, and that they plan to continue with their joint accredited, joint commission accreditation, along with other staff competencies. Okay. So the bottom line, in terms of budget, so $60 per test, very clear throughout Wichita State's application. This includes personnel, equipment, materials, other costs, everything that was asked for. It is all $60 per test, and that is going to be covered by their lab revenue. They are proposing 100,000 tests, and they do indicate this little caveat, that's in italics and bold, that the county will be able to distribute and price the test at their discretion, based on income, insurance, et cetera, and that any revenue will remain at the county. Ascension indicates, again, two different places. One is about a little bit more than $60 overall, and the other is $66 for the materials, for the testing materials. But then also, the equipment that they're requesting is more than $1 million. So you can compare the two costs here, 6 million versus 7.6 million. Wichita State had proposed a number of partners and stakeholders that were going, that were a part of this application, and I will note that Ascension Via Christi is one of those stakeholders. And Ascension Via Christi noted the AMS labs as a partner. In terms of licenses, both have, are, are going to be operational. CLIA lab certification for Wichita State was applied for in mid-June, and Ascension Via Christi has all licenses for their hospitals, clinics, and labs. So a reminder, the activities that are proposed, Wichita State is wanting to have a high throughput, low-cost virus screening, and they're wanting also to make sure that this is in the community, but they will provide an additional service if needed for a mobile drive-through. Ascension Via Christi has the, the establishment of an operating site for swabbing and collecting samples, but they're also wanting to purchase and put into operation one of the PCR tests that they're, they're hoping for that equipment to be purchased. Neither organization identified any organizational duplication of efforts or conflicts. Both proposals offered experts and references, so if there were some questions, there are, there is that as a possibility to follow up. Terms of in-kind contributions, Wichita State has already committed cash to fund equipment, supplies, and startup staffing. I mentioned earlier that in the original application, they had asked for equipment. They went ahead and purchased that equipment. Ascension Via Christi, the proposal does not include in-kind contributions, and this is the verbiage that they've provided. Just a little housekeeping in terms of details, the, there were also work plans that were requested in curricula vitae to get an idea of the key personnel. And we also asked for the proposal to be limited to four pages. Wichita State complied with the four pages, and they did provide a sufficient work plan and CVs for all personnel. Ascension did not comply. They doubled the number of application pages, and they did not include a work plan, nor did they provide CVs. The reason that that is important is that there is a question that is elevated in reviewing the work plan for Wichita State. Because they've already purchased this equipment, they are going to need to test the equipment. They're going to need to do all sorts of different certification processes and validation processes. And as a function of that, it takes time. Again, the funds need to be spent by the 30th of December. So looking at that ramp-up time, it's, it's an important question. The, on the other hand, Ascension Via Christi has not yet purchased the equipment. So there's going to be ramp-up time for both applications, for both organizations. That is undeniable. So just a final point that I'd like to make when it comes to consideration of these applications, and there's a lot, I know, to consider here. There is no consensus among experts and researchers around a raw number of tests or tests per population. We don't have any sort of best evidence around that. But what is becoming very clear among a number of organizations, Johns Hopkins University and Harvard amongst them, and also the World Health Organization, is that testing programs need to be scaled based on the size of the epidemic, not necessarily the size of the population. So when we see positive cases, and we see an increase in positive cases, that means we need to have an increase in testing. So that is the most reliable way, and I know that is contrary, because we think, what's the hard number? We need the number. How many people need to be tested in order for us to get this? And I, I get that, and obviously, we need to know, we need to be able to get a number. But what needs to drive that number is the percent of positive cases from the test, assuming that we're continuing to test in a broad and valid way. The World Health Organization, or WHO, has issued guidance that suggests that positivity rates need to be 5%, actually below 5% for at least 14 days prior to relaxing any social distancing measures. So less than 5% for at least 14 days. So some additional numbers, because I know this is of interest to get some testing numbers. Suppressing, the suppression goal for Kansas, again, according to Harvard, is the, is 433 daily tests per 100,000 population. 433. So for Cedric County, that is about a little bit more than 2,200 daily tests. And that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, doctor. Quite a bit of information, obviously. Thanks for the comparisons. It looks like I tried to do little pluses and minuses as you were talking, so it seems a little bit equally, equal evaluation from my perspective. But seeing it for the first time for 20 minutes here is very difficult. Eventually, maybe there'll be some other questions specifically, but eventually, are you going to be able to recommend what you would think we would do? Either one or the other, or a hybrid of both, possibly?
Excellent. I would be happy to do that. What I would like to do, if possible, is have an opportunity to ask Wichita State University some pointed questions, and also the same for Ascension Via Christi, so that we can get a little bit of clarification on some of these, so that we're not just guessing. And as a result of that, we would like to make, and then for, I'd like to be able to make an informed decision to be able to provide to you as a recommendation.
Okay. Well, and you did mention a number of times in your presentation that the information is a little bit, there are some gray areas, but it's great information overall. So, okay, a couple of questions probably, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. So my question would be, with the equipment lead time of three months, did you ask Wichita State what their lead time was as well?
That's an excellent question. So Wichita State was actually the one that did provide the work plan, and that's what really led us to start considering what the work plan would be for Ascension Via Christi. So yes, we asked for that timeline. Ascension did not provide it. Wichita State did provide it, and that was really what caught our eye. So if you, I don't know if you have the, the applications in front of you, but on page 15 of the Wichita State plan is their work plan, and you'll notice that they have the soft opening for an internal client on the 16th of October, as their proposed date. A number of different, there are all sorts of lab tests and CLIA certification processes. But it is not until the first private test is available, and here they limit this, proposed to 100 to 200 per day, by the 26th of October. So that's where the timeline gets to be really funky, and there's not going to be a way around that with these two applications, because they're, they both have the same deadline, obviously, and they both are, don't have and they both don't have the materials yet.
Yeah, and I do think there's going to be another application as well. I know Heartland Research has been looking at one and trying to expedite that as well. Because with these tests, obviously, our whole goal is to make sure that we're not spreading it, and if we have them ready for school districts to use primarily, we look at just the outbreak we had at the jail. So I think it's critical that we try to speed that up if at all possible, but like you said, every community in America is trying to-
You got it.
...is in the same thing. But I was under the impression that WSU being a university had quicker access to getting some of the machines and materials.
So it's a great question, and they have purchased the equipment, as I've mentioned, but at this point, from what I understand, they have not received it. And so this is obviously a proposed work plan. It might be later, it might be longer, or earlier or longer. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, doc.
Okay. Will we get some more dialogue? Commissioner Howell has some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, so either one of these cases, does the test site handle all of the interface with the patient or the person being tested and communicate back with them? So this is handled completely, if you will, within the testing efforts by this organization?
That is a great question, and no. The, let's see if I can find this. The information is from Wichita State. The test is going to be conducted by the provider, and the lab at Wichita State will process the information. They will provide the information directly to the provider, and they're proposing that there will be a text or some type of, I think they indicate, yeah, a text message to the patient so that they know their results immediately. Whereas with Ascension, they did not address how the patient, the individual, will be receiving the results, but they indicate that the county will receive this by fax or hard copy, and that there could be an aggregate report. Again, something we'd like clarification from Ascension on.
One of our biggest challenges, of course, is getting our test results, the time, number of days, down to something as useful. And that's probably one of the number-one things in this entire proposal, is how long it takes to get the results and how fast we can communicate back to that person. Then the other part of this, which I think is most important, because I think the numbers are mostly the same, except for there's one number that's been significantly different, and it's on page 11 of the presentation, but the capacity is drastically different between the two proposals.
So potentially, again, we did not get the type of data that we would have liked to have received. So Wichita State indicates that they will plan to start with 1,000 tests per week, and that they will ramp up. As I just mentioned to Commissioner O'Donnell, in their timeline, they say that they might need to start with 100 to 200 per day as a sort of a soft start. So how these numbers would actually be worked out, and a question even to add on to that, do we even need these numbers? Do we need this level of capacity of what both of these organizations have proposed? So that is another point for your consideration, that we might not need 100,000 tests, for instance, in a span of two months. It's a question.
One other question is on page 19, bottom of the page, there's a proposed partners slide.
Uh huh.
I see Ascension's actually on both sides of that slide.
Yes.
So they're going to be partners regardless of whether they do this through via Christie or through WSU?
Yes, that is correct. And that is Ascension, whereas, yes, their Ascension's partner is the AMI Labs, or, excuse me, AMS Labs.
Use the word stakeholder. Can you please explain the word stakeholder?
I would love to. So generally, a stakeholder, from my understanding, although this was not described in the application, is someone that tends to have a stake in the matter. So whether they are a partner, a fiscal partner, that has not been described. So again, I would love some clarification on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Doctor, thank you very much for being here and for the analysis that you've done so far. We sincerely appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. You've indicated you still need a little bit more data and a little more answers from each of these different proposals. When can we expect that this is and will come back to us?
So I would, what we have discussed, Mr. Saltz and Ms. Byrne and some others, we have discussed returning back to the two applicants and potentially a third, and discuss with them the questions that have been raised here today and with our team, and that we would like to then return to you potentially with an additional recommendation, potentially as early as next week. Mr. Saltz?
We have meetings currently scheduled with both of these entities on the calendar. The goal would be perhaps another special meeting, sorry, but another special meeting next Thursday or Friday to keep this moving.
Very good.
Well, that's pretty quick.
Another question I have is that you gave us a list of the different types of tests at the beginning. Will each of these different proposals be able to do all of those different types of tests?
Great question, no. It is not, it is, at this point, Ascension is proposing PCR, and Wichita State is proposing PCR, which is considered the gold standard.
Okay, but later on, if we need to do some serology as this continues to develop, the machines won't do that?
That is correct, not to my knowledge. There might be some machines that do that, but PCR analysis is different.
Okay, and none of them will do saliva, then? It's just the nasal pharyngeal test, or are there different ways of doing this?
Yes, actually, the saliva test, there is research that has been done where saliva tests are analyzed with PCR analysis.
Okay, so we can do that test in the future. Okay, well, I guess my last comment really goes back to the county. One of the biggest problems that I see in the county is that the back end of this is where we're kind of lacking. We can get all the tests done, but how do we then notify the folks? Now, the one thing I noticed is that they were going to send out text messages from WSU, but I think we're kind of overloaded right now trying to follow up with people. You know, we would love to see greater testing, but we need, I think in Sedgwick County, the capacity to deal with that additional testing. So it's not so much a question for you, it's more of a question for Sedgwick County of, with all this additional information, how are we going to deal with it?
That is a good question, Commissioner. We have two trains going on track there. Dr. Alblaw is describing in some pretty good detail the scientific portion of this testing. The parallel track is, we have to be able to manage this, and that has to be done either, we only have two options, through people or through technology. So we're looking at technological types of options, software to allow people to schedule themselves online, to allow them to get results back online, but we'll have to hire a lot more people. Those are the choices.
Well, good. The one recommendation that had the text messages, I think, could help alleviate some of that burden that we're putting on the staff right now, so I appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. This is a lot of information. Thank you so much for being here today. I guess a couple of questions would be, if with the number of tests that are recommended for per 100,000, so currently, you're stating it's 22,340, or, excuse me, 2,234 in Sedgwick County, and these two options, Wichita State, 5,000 per week, Ascension, 5,400 per week, do you know if there's any indication that Wichita State would be looking to do more nationwide, or would they be looking to do any sort of national kind of partnering? Would the priority be here for either of these? You know, because we are looking into doing something in the sense of testing. I know Johnson County is not looking. So could you speak to that a little bit? And maybe you don't know the answer, but that's a question that I have as far as keeping it local first, prioritization of Sedgwick County residents?
Sure. According to both applications, both clearly indicate that they are proposing this would be for Sedgwick County. I could ask absolutely the question of if they're interested in proceeding. I don't know enough about the CARES Act to know if that is a possibility. My understanding is that it's for a specific community, for your specific county, so it might be state. That is a deficit of my knowledge, I don't know.
So the other question would be, I know that via Christie has satellite locations, they're kind of built up already. How do you find that could come in handy as far as collection sites? Because I didn't really see that listed here in their proposal, as far as the physical locations they have, access to getting in. So that's, I guess that's a question I have. They're already kind of set up to do it with certifications. I mean, they're a hospital system, obviously. And then the last question I have, I don't know if you had a-
Happy to, yes. So the, for the location, it was not included. That information was not included. It is AMS Labs, so there is, that is a point that we would like to also request additional information. It did not indicate that it was going to be Ascension via Christie St. Francis, or what that plan was. They did indicate as a part of their proposal that there would be, that they have created a mock plan, a design, but they did not indicate where that would be located.
So, you know, I guess the whole point of this is to have a quick, accurate test and to get results. Do either of these two, from what you've seen so far, fit that? I mean, would you be willing to give us a recommendation? And understanding that there are a lot of questions, but at the end of the day, I think a lot of people are going to say, this is a lot of information, tell us what to do. Can you give us a recommendation? I mean, a quick, accurate test, and how does it relate to the health department as well? Because we're going to be ramping up our testing.
Right. Yeah, it's a great question. I would love to give a recommendation. I would like a little bit more information before I do it, because I can't give you the specificity and sensitivity of the machine that Wichita State has purchased. So I can't, I don't know. My assumption is that they're both going to be comparable, and my assumption is that the timeline will be comparable, because even though via Christie set up, and this is what they do, they also are going to have to purchase a new machine, and it's going to take time. There is a plus with Wichita State in that they are, they've already purchased the machine, and they are proposing a flexible implementation, driving people to a healthcare, their healthcare provider. But there are also advantages of having a drive-through. So there are a walk-through. It's really, at this point, I'm happy to give you a recommendation, but I would prefer to have additional information before I do.
Okay. And then the last part is about, we had talked, Tom, about a portal. I did see the whole texting component with Wichita State, which is awesome, but was there any talk of some sort of portal, if somebody goes and they can log in to see, like, I mean, you order a pizza, you know, and it's in the oven, right? I mean, can we, is there any sort of technology out there that we could consider when we talk about testing, so that, you know, our problems with hiring folks to call people back, and maybe that isn't part of this conversation, but I really, I think it is. I mean, I think people want to know so they can go back to work, and that's really important. So I'd like to ask that question to both of these entities. I mean, the texting component is great, but I didn't see that with via Christie, so that would be one thing I'd like to know, because sending it to our health department is only going to overload our system even more than it's already overloaded. So that's a question I'd like to ask.
That is a german question, and I'd like, when Tim gets the podium later, maybe he could come back and address that particular component of that, what the technology is that we're looking at. I want to go back to either your first or second question on the regionalization of this. And I haven't talked with Ascension, but in discussions with Wichita State, I know they would love to be a regional or state solution to rapid testing. We have had, we are all trying to open communication channels to the state of Kansas and talk about a state rapid testing solution. That's dragging this a little bit, so we have to move ahead with a county solution, because that's who we work for, the people of Sedgwick County. But we ought to have one eye also on what the state is doing, and we ought to work together as a team. On the CARES funding component of it, our CARES funding for Sedgwick County, and Lindsay can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is for Sedgwick County. So if Butler and Johnson, or, I'm sorry, Butler, Sumner, surrounding counties want to utilize either of these solutions, they would have to come up with CARES funding that they are going to be given of their own. But I think clearly Wichita State would love to be considered as a regional solution to rapid testing, and it would love to be, I think, considered as a state solution, but we're not to that maturity yet on dialogue with the state to move that direction.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, I mean, Wichita State's already purchased the equipment, and so it seems like from this presentation, I mean, they're moving, the train is going down the track already, so I want to make sure that the money that we are spending here in Sedgwick County that was allotted for Sedgwick County is to take care of Sedgwick County residents first. So that would be my hesitation, I guess. So, but this was great, this is a ton of information to mull over. Is this, and Chairman, is this a, this is a receive and file?
That's correct. For today, ma'am, and then I think if Dr. Alblaw can get her questions answered between now and next week, then the next special meeting, I think we'd really like some direction from the commission on what to move forward with. Under the current state of technology-
Right.
-remembering, again, this is so fluid, technology can be radically different in 60 days. And so if you just think about the pot of money we've set aside for testing, these solutions, what Sedgwick County has moved toward, and what either of these solutions would provide within our budget, and leave extra money, because we have to pay attention to what the next technology is on testing. It could be totally different in 60 days.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, just about saliva testing. Do you see, so there were a couple of places that were approved for emergency use of this test. Do you see anything coming down the track as far as it being, becoming a gold standard? And what is the rate in which it would become like a gold standard? Can you speak to saliva testing?
I can speak a little bit about saliva testing. There are three that have been, three entities that have received approval, the temporary approval, emergency use approval for saliva-based testing, and their data are pretty solid. However, and that's on their materials, when you look at the research that has been done, there's been a meta-analysis, meaning all of these studies, looking at all of the data and basically melding the stats together to figure out what's the average, for instance, and the sensitivity and specificity is significantly lower than the PCR analysis for viral. So it is with the nasopharyngeal, so it is a little tricky. It is definitely of interest because it is a lot less invasive, and it is probably going to allow for other people to get tested because it's not as invasive. But the science is rapidly advancing, and so it is not on the approved list at this point, or recommended list, excuse me, for Centers of Disease Control as a collection mechanism, but I can see that that would be something that's going to turn.
Do you know how quickly it will turn?
No, I don't. I will try and rub my crystal ball a little bit harder tonight, see if I can-
Well, let me have it when you're done.
You got it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, doctor, well, thank you. I think that you can tell that the commission is eager to allow you and the staff to get more information, get these few questions answered. If you did simple math, your last slide, 2,200 tests a day, basically 10,000 a week, and raw numbers say, if both of them were in place, that would be 10,000 a week. So it could almost be argued that we should do both, but that's 30,000-feet comment. The other comment I would have for Lindsay and our staff is that we ought to communicate with the State Spark Committee, because if, in fact, we do help other counties originally, as been pointed out, I think the state should be participating through their counties or however they want to do it. I don't know who would be the best deliverer of that message. I would be glad- I would be glad to talk to some members of the Spark Committee about that if that would help.
Lindsay and I had a sidebar going. She's going to, when she gets the podium, she'll talk about Spark money designated for testing. But to answer your direct question, Commissioner, I think that should, anything that any of the commission could do to help with the facilitation of that discussion would definitely be beneficial.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, Doctor. Appreciate your time. You spent a lot of time on this and appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Okay.
Receive and file, please, sir.
Yes. Motion to receive and file. I'll make that motion.
Second.
And motion is seconded to receive and file this report. Any other comments? Being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. And that brings Lindsay up now.
Next item is...
It's the same item, sir. It's just the next part of the same item. So Lindsay will now talk. Okay. And Chairman, Dr. Menz would like to make a few comments before he leaves just on the testing piece before we move to Lindsay, if that would be okay, sir.
Yes, sir. Let's do that. Hello, Dr. Menz. Thank you for being here again this morning and for sitting with us. And I think you're part of this analysis team as well, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So Gerald Menz, Health Officer for Cedric County. I just had a couple of points I wanted to make. First of all, I also want to thank Dr. Alblak for the efforts she's done. And she is office in the same building I am since she's part of the University of Kansas. And I would make myself available to her to help with some of the questions we need to formulate, some of the questions we need to ask both these entities. Be happy to provide that service. Number two, I am listed on the stakeholders for the Wichita State. I am not sure what the word stakeholder means. I'm a stakeholder in the sense I too want more testing in this community, but I have not had any formal relationship with them. I've heard a presentation they made to the health department. And I was serving there as a, the health officer for Cedric County. So I just want to clarify, while I don't deny being a stakeholder, I just want you to know what that means. It means merely I'm interested in what they're doing. Thirdly, I want to comment on the number of tests we need to do. As you've alluded to, it's not just the number of tests, it's the follow-through is also as important as getting the tests done. That is a major issue. That's been a problem. Yes, 10,000 a week now with the case rate we have now. I hope to heaven in October, our case rate is lower if any of our activities are successful in preventing this. So I don't know what the case rate recommendation will be in October, November, when these machines will be up and going, hopefully. There's no way of knowing that. It just depends on how many cases we're having in the community and whether we're higher or lower than we are now. So, but still, I think this is...
That's a great point, Doctor. So that's 10,000 a week based on what we see right now.
And our rates are high now, higher than we like.
Yeah. If you were talking to us in April or May, it would have been 5,000 a week.
Much lower. Could be much lower.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, not only for us, but for the public to know this.
And it's just to point out, this is a very complex issue. The machines are complex, the tests are complex, and our situation in this community is fluid and it's complex too. So I just want to point that out. We may not need that number of tests, but I don't know. Maybe the case rate will even be higher in October. I hope not. So I just want to make those comments and I'll be glad to work with Dr. Alblak on these further questions we need. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying all of those. Lindsay, are you doing a drawing or something?
You wish.
Oh, I just wondered. I didn't get my ticket in there.
Commissioners, Lindsay Perouseau, your CFO. While Emily is passing out your first presentation for today, I just want to quickly follow up on what Tom had promised you. And that is information on what the state is doing. So the Spark Committee last week put out, or I'm sorry, probably a week and a half or two weeks ago now, put out their plan for how they want to spend their money. And of their total allocation, they've put 86.1 million toward the public health initiative that they had identified as a priority for that team. That includes the COVID-19 preparedness and mitigation strategy for a total of about $26.9 million. Of that, $20.7 million has specifically been identified to increase lab capacity. And that is across the state. And at least in looking at the materials that they've prepared, they say it'll be statewide, it'll be based on impact. It's not going to be based on the fact that Cedric County received a direct allocation of 99.6 million. So we're, you know, out of that queue. It will be based on what's happening in the state. So there is, there does appear to be some intention to do a state response and bolster their efforts. They also have a 68-week timeline that they have identified on that, while basically, I assume, once the state finance council approves them to proceed.
Lindsay, thank you. Lindsay, thanks for clarifying that. But maybe you or Dr. Menz, while you're here, or Dr., how many, if this was a statewide deal, how many other labs are there in the state that are, or how many, are there other areas that are trying to do similar proposals right now out in southwest Kansas are you aware of? Or I assume Johnson's trying to do something, but is that, or is that in the Spark discussion that you saw, Lindsay?
I can speak to the Spark discussion. No, there, as far as I know, it's pretty much each region, each area of the state that's doing its own thing, which is why I think to Tom's point about trying to coordinate at a state level, that would be helpful. And we can reach out to the Spark Committee. I can also reach out to Johnson County and see what they're doing.
Right. Because I think Lawrence and Kay, are you doing something? So Lawrence had, but is that just for their school or for their region, I think? I don't know. Doctor, you're more than welcome to comment.
Just note for my contacts in the Wyandotte and Johnson County area that they're working on something similar. I don't know any details about it, but I knew they're very interested.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions that I can answer on the state's Spark Task Force before we move to our next presentation? Or anything else about testing? I'm happy to try and answer any questions if you had any about that from the CARES side.
Do you want to explain that one chart with pluses and minuses?
Nope, not, not remotely.
Then we'll move on.
Those are different charts than I'm used to.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, then we will go ahead and jump into, we have two presentations related to the CARES spending plan today. The first presentation is follow-up on the discussion that occurred last week about allocating up to $5 million for those businesses that were impacted by the order to close bars and nightclubs. Then we'll also talk about the school district funding and how to go about distributing and allocating those dollars. And then, as Tom said, we'll talk about the actual level of spending, particularly now that the health department has proceeded with actually making the orders for their COVID-19 supplies. So for the assistance to bars and nightclubs due to the closure order, what we'll do for each of these, what I'm going to call deep dives into spending plan categories, each one will start with this slide and basically give us some high-level perspective and a refresher on how CARES funding is intended to be used. So we did receive $99.6 million in coronavirus relief funding from the CARES Act. We also have now received $9.3 million in funding from the state. We owe the state a response back on how we plan to spend their 9.3 million by August 15th. So at your commission meeting on August 12th, we will come back with a plan based on the business needs survey about how we want, how we think you could spend that. Again, acceptable use of CRF funds, it must be a necessary COVID-19-related expense incurred between March 1st and December 30th, 2020, and it cannot have been included in the 2020 budget. The guidance changes frequently, and I could kick myself for printing these last night because this morning we found out that there's new guidance out again. And don't ask me what's in it, I haven't had time to look at it yet. But it's changing constantly. And then I'm sure you all have seen the communication about the new Heels Act that's out that basically would loosen the restrictions even further. It would allow us to use it for revenue replacement and it would free up some of the timeline, is my understanding. So of course, there's still a long way to go on that negotiation, but just the guidance is changing and we expect it to change some more. So it's fun to try and keep up. So the needs assessments that we have done so far show us that we had a county need internally of about 60 million. That includes the $25 million that's been set aside for testing that you spent your morning talking about so far. We went through the notice of funding opportunity. Through that process, we received 131 responses worth about $66 million. And this slide illustrates how that broke down by category. Other, I would highlight, we had 57 responses worth about $15 million. And we did have a number of businesses, restaurants and things respond through that process. We also just went through the business needs survey that closed last Friday. We received 140 responses across a wide variety of industries and that data analysis is going on now. And we'll have additional details for you in the coming days and weeks. The top three priorities that, well, and excuse me, there was a total of $10.6 million worth of needs identified. That included expenses to date plus anticipated expenses through December 30th. There were nine duplicates within that 140 response from the notice of funding opportunity. Those needs only totaled to about $300,000. So overall, not a particularly significant level of duplication there. The top three priorities that were identified by the businesses that responded, number one was that they requested PPE or other protective measures. Number two is they requested help with adjusting the way they deliver their service. And number three was technology to do that same thing, to adjust the way they deliver service. And so that is being taken to heart and that, we'll use that information to come back to you. That's not to say that there weren't lots of other needs in other ways. Many people identified business interruption grants and things like that as something that would be very nice. But overall, in terms of asking them to prioritize, these were the top three priorities that they identified. So in terms of the spending plan, just a quick refresher on how that 99.6 million we received from the state plus the 9.3, or I'm sorry, from the federal government, plus the 9.3 million we received from the state was categorized. Number one, of course, was testing, recognizing that that has an impact on schools, on the economy, businesses getting back to work, staying at work, all of that. So that was why we allocated more than 25% of our direct allocation there. Next was the medical and emergency support. Then we had staffing, again, for those front-line type response areas of our organization. We wanted to safely provide services, so protecting our own staff and citizens when they're in our facilities. Next was the aid to local governments. And again, that was something that we actually took on through the resolution that was signed with the state. We took on that obligation. Also, support for public health initiatives for vulnerable populations, for mental health, for educational institutions. And then the 9.3 million that we had received from the state, we said would be allocated to businesses. And we went through the process of doing that business needs survey to try and solicit the information as to how we would do that. So then getting into specifics of the program we're going to talk about today. So one of the things that has been crystal clear from the beginning related to CARES and coronavirus relief funds themselves, even in the very first round of guidance we received back in April, what we know is that we cannot duplicate other assistance programs. And so we have to do our due diligence to ensure that that doesn't happen. And so for consideration, as we go through this discussion about maybe what a potential program could, should look like, we need to make sure that it does not potentially conflict with the paycheck protection program. The reason I bring that up as something here, recognizing that that program has mostly been depleted, is it is in both the Senate and House versions of bills that are coming up to do some type of expansion of the paycheck protection program. So on an ongoing basis, that still remains a risk for us. There are also going to be individual stimulus payments under both versions of the Heroes and Heels Act. And actually, they look pretty similar between the two. It just varies on dependence. Unemployment, Commissioner O'Donnell rightly pointed out last week that that is very close to ending. There is discussion about extending it, but even the discussion about extending it, there's pretty big conflict about how that's going to look, whether it's $200 or $600 for some short amount of time, up to maybe replacing 70% of income. The state of Kansas already offers 67% of income or two-thirds of your pay. So there's going to be yet more discussion on that and opportunities for assistance. We also know that the state has identified Spark funding for businesses. So $61.5 million has been set aside for business retention and expansion, again, a statewide program. And I don't know if you all had an opportunity to see the document that came out from Greater Wichita Partnership yesterday, but I believe it was the Secretary of Commerce who was quoted in there saying that he recognizes Wichita as a major economic engine for the state. And so we will not be overlooked in that process. And so that tells me we should anticipate some funding coming to this area. In what form, I don't know. Along with $9.5 million for workforce support and retraining. So to take folks who have been displaced and maybe are on unemployment, give them some additional training and hopefully provide some additional opportunities for them to work. We do know, again, that we owe the state a spending plan in their format by August 15th. And so we will bring that to you at our next scheduled meeting on August 12th for your consideration. And as I said, we'll have lots of discussion between now and then. We don't want to hitch a cold that day and ask you to approve something. So there will be discussion on that. And then one of the things that we, Kevin Stamper in the legal office facilitated for us, was sitting in on a business interruption insurance webinar and program. So that's something that many businesses are now starting to look into, whether they have that through a communicable disease or a pollution-type policy. That is another thing that is explicitly excluded under the CARES guidance, that if you receive insurance proceeds, we can't duplicate that. So all of these things I bring up, not just because I want you to know what may be available for our businesses and our citizens that are impacted, I think that's really important, but also because these are things that as county staff, we need to verify and check against to make sure that we are not potentially misspending money and then putting the commission in a position to have to repay something that certainly would come up as an audit finding. And of course, it's not just that it's not fun to have to go through that as an audit, but the long-term ramifications are that it can have an impact on our credit rating, which can then, of course, have an impact on our bottom line in our checkbook. So we have asked for information. I want to thank Justin Waggoner and Anisa Redd for their help in compiling this information. We know that across the county, for these four weeks, that the order is in place for now, there are an estimated 81 entities that would be impacted. And they are varied. We have everything from an American Legion hall to gentleman's clubs to straight up what you would think of as a traditional bar and nightclub in Old Town to small, small bars across the community. So we have 73 in Wichita, one in Andale, one in, or two in Cheney, excuse me, one in Colwich, two in Garden Plain, one in Mulvane, and one in Sedgwick. So we are looking at a scope for a program of up to $81 million, or I'm sorry, of 81 entities for the $5 million, not 81 million, I'm sorry. It's not a good mistake for your CFO to make. So the program options, we have spent a considerable amount of time trying to refine and define what a program could look like with an expectation to try and come to you today with a nice, neat package. But unfortunately, the talking points that I got back and the questions I received from WIT in trying to determine what a program would look like essentially require direction from the commission. And unfortunately, I have not been able to understand what a consensus would be. And so I would like to bring up some of these options for consideration today. I will tell you that at the end of this, I'm sufficiently scared of the concerns. And what I would like to recommend is to allow us to bring you back a proposal on August 12th that tries to take into account all of these many moving parts, recognizing that many of the impacted entities are on the list of groups that responded to us and said that they were impacted by the closure. And so we can take that into account and try and develop something that puts the commission at less risk and ultimately our taxpayers at less risk of having to pay back anything to the federal government. The part of this that's important to note is that the inspector general's office has said that we have to keep these records active for up to five years. We can expect audits for up to five years. And so entities that receive funding through this can potentially expect questions for up to five years. up to five years. And so those are all, those are all points to consider. So let me get into a little bit of, of why I'm nervous and share that with you and if you'll allow me to. So first, what we need to understand is that targeted initiatives like this, and this is from Whit O'Briens, this is our consultant, targeted initiatives set a precedent that assistance will be available beyond the targeted group being provided assistance as part of this initiative. So what we need to consider is that as potential orders become necessary down the road, if COVID gets worse, you may set a precedent by providing this type of relief. And where that money comes from is questionable. Who will qualify for the program and how will they demonstrate that they're an impacted entity? What is the purpose of the assistance? Is it to support individuals who may become unemployed or businesses that must close? What are the types of assistance that will be provided? Business interruption, forward-looking modifications to adhere to public health guidance? How do you quantify loss if businesses are closing? What will the assistance be for? Are there expectations that employees continue to be paid if it's for businesses? And if so, at a 100% or what level? If operating expenses, what specific expenses are anticipated? What help do we need to provide? How do we validate that employees have experienced economic loss? Many service industry employees rely on cash tips. Their paychecks do not completely represent their entire expected revenue, leaving an unmet need. How might these benefits be duplicated with the federal assistance relief programs? And how will the county validate what assistance is already received? There's also considerations of undue enrichment. There's also discussion that because of the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act of 1996, since this was passed through social security, we must verify the immigration status of individuals because CARES Act was done under the Social Security Act. And so that creates additional complexities and challenges for us. And so what they have suggested potentially looking at, and one of the things that I think the state Spark Committee might look to, is trying to, as they put it, retraining for new or temporary COVID jobs. And in discussion with Commissioner Cruz as we were going through this, she had one concept that seems to align with this. And that is basically, we know that we have a lot of temporary work, even we know that we need work for call centers and things like that. We're using a temp agency. How do we help advertise maybe that those jobs are available? Not, we can't make guarantees, of course, but how about trying to do that? And so that was something that also came through the consultants that other communities are looking at. So a lot of verification of many different things and what requirements we would impose. So considerations that I've gleaned in discussions with you all, in discussions with Whit O'Briens and discussion with our staff, and then with BKD, who's helping us act as the grant compliance entity, we need to consider fairness across industries. And one of the points that Whit O'Briens made was, in the time it takes to stand this up, could we also have something stood up either under the state Spark Task Force or through the business program that we're trying to start up here in about two weeks? Again, that consideration of what future closures do and equity across industries. We have already gone through a process, a fairly lengthy process, to try and determine what the need is in the community and prioritize those. We do have a relatively low reserve in CARES. We've set aside 10%. Many other communities have set aside 20 to 25%, recognizing how early we are. And also, I think, trying to recognize the potential for CARES changing and maybe there would be some revenue loss ability down the road. That would not be something that we have set ourselves up to. We have tried to set up ourselves to get money out into the community as much as possible. Depending on the program, as I just went on and on and on about, the risk or administrative burden would be significant. And then, of course, the fact that we have to keep all of these records live and active for five years is something that intimidates me, honestly. We know that the state Spark funding has been set aside for economic revitalization specifically, including a healthy chunk over $60 million to keep businesses in place and open. And then finally, all signs right now from both the Senate and House bills that have been passed, the Republicans and the Democrats, seems to identify more federal stimulus opportunities coming. And so in order to try and avoid duplication of programs, it seems like a prudent thing to do for now would be to let us craft this plan on August 12th, come back to you with some suggested recommendations. And if you don't feel like we've met the goals, you know, we can continue to refine those programs and spending plans as we talked about from the beginning, this has to be flexible. So I am happy to answer any questions. If, if you have a thought on what program you'd like to enact, or if you'd like us to direct to do something, we can certainly go and do that. Otherwise, my recommendation for your vote would be to table this item and allow us to come back on August 12th with a business program using the 9.3 million that we've been allocated from the state.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. That's a, personally, I like the theory that you come back August 12th, but I'll see if there's any other comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Lindsay, thank you for your work on this. I know it was stressful and I know we've had a couple of conversations since our meeting last week, but I do appreciate you working with the team, working with Whit O'Brien, working with our legal department on binding solutions for this. So I, to echo Commissioner Meister, next, next Wednesday is great. No one is anticipating a quick turn of the, the switch on this, but I just, as long as the community knows, we are trying to find solutions because we're acknowledging certain industries that have been hit harder than others. So anyway, just, just, yeah, to be clear, because I know I made that motion last week, we can, we can absolutely wait till next Wednesday. Thank you.
I think she said August 12th.
Yes.
Two weeks.
Our next Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry. Yes, our next Wednesday meeting, sorry.
Yep, okay.
Should have been more specific.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Can you please elaborate? And I don't see Sheena here. Can she, can you elaborate on Whit O'Brien's recommendations as far as, oh, my mic's not on?
Okay, sorry. Can you please elaborate on the recommendation from Whit O'Brien, our consultant, as far as what other communities are doing as far as temporary jobs to fight COVID and kind of join, join the team as far as trying to help us combat this virus? Can you, can you explain that a little bit?
I will give you what I have. And they have offered to pull more information for us if we're interested. So I'll go back to them and see what they can provide. But what I can tell you for now is they say that retraining for new and temporary COVID jobs is something that they're starting to see in some communities. They've started to partner with healthcare industry to capitalize on service industry workers hospitality training to bolster healthcare, or to bolster telehealth appointments. And so that is how, that is the program that's been stood up apparently in a couple of places. And we can dig in and get some of those details.
Okay. And I don't know, Chairman, if it's appropriate now to have Sheena come or if you'd like to. Sheena, would you mind just coming up for a second and explaining kind of how someone would apply, what jobs are available, what qualifications you have, what we're looking for, how many, how many total jobs are available?
Yes, I would love to give you an update on that. Sheena Schmucks, Chief Human Resources Officer. I, I do want to start out by saying that we are continuously working on this. In fact, we have a meeting at 11 o'clock today with one of the staffing agencies to help getting us going on that. We do have one current contract in place with a staffing agency for call center takers. It's, it's in place, but we need to make sure that all of our contracts protect us as well. So we need to make sure that we have the current job descriptions up and going and make sure that what we are asking for is exactly what the Health Department needs. So I just wanted to start off by saying that we do have a meeting today. Right now, we also have jobs on our website. There are, I believe, 16 different types of positions with 64 vacancies. We're not having the best of luck filling those types of jobs. Some of them have specific requirements such as nurses and things of that nature, the disease investigators that need to have a little bit more background in the medical field. So they're, they're kind of tough to fill. We have folks who we have hired and they haven't shown up for the job. So again, another, another issue that we're facing there. Again, working with those staffing agencies, we'd like to get something going very quickly. We're going to pitch those contracts as quick as we can to have those available staff going for us. But it's, it's just a process that we're going through right now. And there are going to be hundreds of jobs that are open.
Can you give a base pay? Are there benefits? What are some other things as far as those temporary jobs that will be available?
So the temporary jobs that we have listed on our site, again, those disease investigators, nurses, things of that nature, the, the base pay varies for each of those positions because they're, they're classified differently. But we do offer benefits with those positions. The ones that we will be moving to the staffing agency, again, that's why we're working with the, the agency to clearly articulate the job description. We'll articulate the rates as well, what we are looking for and we find competitive so that we can, we can find appropriate workers, but they will not have benefits like the ones that we have here.
Okay. So outside of disease investigators, which I think Adrienne mentioned yesterday requires a bachelor's degree, is that correct? Yes, she's shaking her head. The call takers, you know, the, the call center staff, what kind of requirements?
So those are basic entry level positions. We will have the staffing agency do the vetting for us, so they still have to go through background checks and things of that nature. And then they're going to require a certain skill set in customer service, phone etiquette, things like that is what they'll be looking for.
Okay.
And we've, we actually, I mean, we've had to go through where some of the staffing personnel that they provided to us have not worked out. And so, you know, it's, it's almost like a revolving door that we are continuously looking.
Okay. So until all of the contracts are in place with staffing agencies, someone can go to our website currently and fill out an application, is that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And like I said, we do have one contract with ADECO right now for the call taker position. And that was put in place prior to any approvals for this last round of 100-plus positions.
Now, lastly, can you talk about, you talked about retraining, training up. I know that, can you talk about that a little bit? I mean, would, would someone be able to receive training for one of these positions should they not meet certain qualifications right now and would that be covered?
I think it would depend on the position. It's my understanding from the Health Department that everyone that is hired, they go through, I believe it's a half day or a full day type training, so they get the basics and it's very quick and very brief.
Okay. So just to recap, there are 64 available positions right now?
Yes.
And you said, you said, you said the term 100. What, I mean, we, we did approve 115 positions a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Is that this, out of the 115, there's 64 left?
No, that's in addition.
Okay, in addition.
Yes. And the, the 100-plus is what we're working with the staffing agency.
Okay. So 100-plus positions are available to be filled, working out of CARES funding to help make sure people receive their test results, those kinds of things, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would also add that we also have county staff that are also helping kind of bridge the gap until we get the contracts in place with the staffing agencies. So we do have people from other departments that are going over and helping.
I appreciate your work on this. I know that I've kind of been a pain with all my emails about how quickly we're getting this completed, but I just, I really hope that people understand we are working as quickly as possible to try to help people who are out of work understand that this is temporary. And if, if you can help by becoming temporarily employed to help our Health Department, the jobs are there and we need help. So I, I appreciate you doing everything you can and please relay, relay that to your staff.
Yeah. And I would say it's a joint effort between the Health Department and purchasing and human resources that is doing that. And one, one of the staffing agencies that we are working with, and I think Adrienne alluded to it yesterday, some of them are very specific in what they provide. So one, one particular company is, we're just working with them on the medical side and then other companies with the clerical side, so we can try to get the most people in as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I will also add the other thing, once we get those agencies up, we are happy to direct people to their websites as well.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have questions for, for Lindsay. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for, for presenting some of the details behind some of the things we need to understand about this decision. I, I see on, on one of your pages here that you say the county has roughly $60 million worth of identified needs. Does that include six or $7 million for 100,000 COVID tests we just saw earlier in our present, the previous presentation?
So, yes, so the $25 million that had been set aside in the spending plan, it was a rough estimate at the beginning of what we thought we would need. And so what you have heard today would be in addition to the 2.3 million that we just outlined this week to make the purchases for the Health Department's testing, in addition to the costs we've already incurred for staffing, lab work, swabs and other things. So that all comes out of that $25 million bucket.
Just in rough estimates, if we were to pick one of those two plans, let's say we picked the $7 million option, because that's one of the two options on the, on the table, that's 100,000 tests plus what we've already spent on this, how, how much of that 25 million is available still?
I would, I would ballpark right now that we have spent or committed roughly $4 million toward testing specifically, not including the staffing, because I still need to coordinate with the Health Department to understand which of their existing staff have actually worked toward the testing component. And we would attribute those costs against this. So if we do that, 4 million plus roughly, let's say 7 million, although we will have discussions about what's an appropriate use of CARES funding for testing at some point, that would leave another $14 million in that bucket. But that still has not resolved how we're communicating and doing the administrative work, which each of those proposals that you heard this morning did not include or did not address.
Right. And again, I know that's just a round number, 100,000 tests is a round number. I don't know that that's the right number. I could see how we could probably go through that pretty quickly and we need to double, triple, quadruple that number. So we don't know what the future holds in terms of the total cost of testing in the future, but I know we need to have money available for whatever is needed. So that's, that's a concern. I know that, just want to remind, I guess remind everybody that you are a little bit busy at the moment with the budget. And on August the 12th, is also another big day for Sedgwick County, is it not?
It is, hopefully. Hopefully you all approve the Sedgwick County and Fire District budget that day.
Yeah. Okay. So that's, that's, just so everybody understands, you're not looking for things to do at the moment.
No. No, I'm not.
I would say this, you know, you presented enough concerns that I'm ready to make a motion to table this entirely. Some of the reasons why, it's not that we don't love our small businesses, we do. I don't think that these particular small businesses are different than other small businesses. And the fact that there's a lot of folks out there trying to survive in this, in this different economy that we're living in right now. And although I want them to survive, I very much do, I don't think we can single them out and say that they're the ones that should get this money and the others that have also suffered harm, that they're not going to receive the same type of consideration from Sedgwick County. So I, I find that fairness, the fairness perspective to be probably one of the most compelling arguments. The other part of this is, I think there's a lot of questions about whether or not this would put our own taxpayers with property tax dollars at risk. This, that needs to be understood before we go any further. I think that's the number one question before we would even consider this at all. But you also mentioned, there really isn't enough money, not enough money, even if you added the, the $9.3 million, we, we have 110, less than 110 million dollars available to the county in total. But we have about, by my math, we had about, currently about 136 million, a little more than 136 million dollars with requests, if we were to pay out what we, what we know of right now, we don't have enough money to do the things we have to do. And that does not count future expanded testing that we might need to, we, again, I think that our numbers in testing might be much higher than what we're talking about this morning. So if this goes on for another year, it could get extremely difficult going forward. And I think that money, that money should be preserved for things that are actually designed to combat, if you will, the coronavirus in our community, not just necessarily focus on individuals and the small businesses that have been, have been harmed. Again, I want them to be protected, I want them to be helped as much as, as much as possible we can, but I'm not sure this is the right strategy to help them. I know I probably stand alone when I say this, but I, I think the, my perspective is, we we probably should not have shut them down in the first place. I expect them to follow the rules. That's been my perspective all along. But to the, to the extent they've been essentially picked on because we assume they're going to be bad players, that's, that's unfortunate. Another way to help these folks out is to give them the chance to comply with all of the rules and stay open. I've had numerous of these small businesses reach out to me and say, we have been doing this and it's not fair to us that you're picking on us. And I understand that perspective. I'm sorry for them that that's one of the problems with what we've done here. But to give them money is not necessarily solving the problem. It's a Band-Aid at best. I would say that fairness is obviously a problem, administrative burden you talked about, the five-year auditing that can bring this up many, many years into the future. Those are all concerns. The precedent towards other businesses, right now we're talking about bars and nightclubs, but I would not be surprised if we're talking about gymnasium, I'm sorry, gyms. Other businesses in the future, I think, are behind this. We will see what the future holds, but I expect that this is going to expand if our numbers don't get better. So we will see other businesses probably have the same type of problem in the future. We talked about it's not right for government to pick winners and losers. I think that's exactly what this is. And I think this is the worst kind of government, when we use tax dollars to redistribute those dollars where we think that they're most needed. And those dollars are real, they come from other people. And other people who are hurting and have been harmed are paying for the benefit of others that are, that are also being harmed. So to me, this is government meddling and stuff we should just stay out of. And so with that, we believe in small, limited government. This is not, this is not that. This is exactly the opposite. This is what's wrong with government. If we're going to try to be small and, and let the free market do its thing, we've got to apply the rules fairly amongst all businesses and let them compete. And we've, we've meddled, we've meddled in this too far in one, by doing one thing and now we're going to do another. So I think my motion is to table this. So I make that motion today to table this entirely.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will second that motion for many of the reasons that Commissioner Howell has already mentioned. But our finance staff is working extremely hard, very diligent. They will do anything that we ask them to do. But they are working many, many hours to accomplish this. I think it puts our general fund dollars at risk because if later on the audit comes back and says that we can't use this, some of these places may be out of business, we may never recover any of this money. And that, then it's going to come out of general fund. And so we're going to take property tax dollars in order to be able to accomplish this. I've gotten emails from one gentleman that said, hey, my IRA went down, so I need you to be able to compensate for, for me because of the COVID. I got another email that said that the orphium is hurting and we need to compensate the orphium. There are tons of problems out there. I feel very badly for the ones that are currently impacted, but I think it opens a huge can of worms and it puts our staff in a position that we're pulling them away from something that is really extremely valuable, and that's getting us through August the 12th so that we can get a budget put together and we can figure out how the rest of this CARES funding gets allocated. So I'll second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recognize that this motion isn't, that the previous motion from last week, that it's not perfect. But what I do know is that when we, as a governing body, tell certain businesses that they can't open their doors, and then we still send them property tax bills for that same time, I think that's very hypocritical. That, I would like to know if that, if we all think that's okay, we shut you down for a month, but we're still going to send you your property tax bill for that month, you're still going to pay utility bills for that month. Like I said, the difference between this order last week and the orders previously is that a lot of those orders were mainly from Governor Kelly. This was our own order. It will be the Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office and the Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office that'll be sending out the valuations and the tax bills, and we're putting them out of business. So I, I just, I said it last week, I said it yesterday on the news, but my heart really hurts for these small business owners because it's a lot more than just the small business, it's all of their employees. And frankly, most of those small businesses, they're, they're doing what they can survive, but the people that I'm talking to, they're, they're most upset for their employees, particularly because of the inaction from Washington DC on what will be happening with unemployment after the first, so just later this week. But if it's will the body to table this, I, I understand. Like I said, I know it's not perfect, but I, I do think we need to acknowledge that we have put small businesses and their employees in a very bad spot. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, to say that we're, we're picking on any one entity, I don't believe is true. What we are doing as the Board of Health is trying to slow the spread of a virus. We are taking recommendations from our health officer. We are understanding that this is one thing that's happening across the country. And what we're trying to do is prevent our hospital system from filling up, our, our system as a whole from breaking down. So I hope that people understand we're trying to do what we can to slow the spread. That's, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. I don't want to make these decisions. I don't want to shut anyone down, but I want people to be well and be safe. And I want to get our kids back in school. I want for our teachers to feel like they can do their job in a safe environment. So I, Lindsay, you did mention that next, or on the, in a couple of weeks, you're going to be presenting the 9.3 million dollar, which could include and probably does include some relief for some of these businesses. Is that true?
It certainly would be our intention to try and help them. We have not crafted that proposal yet, though.
Okay. So you also mentioned that rules are changing every day. There was something that came out today that you haven't, and I haven't even had a chance to check it out yet. So I think it's important to understand that we, we want to do exactly what we have to do. And we make decisions and they're going to be right, and we make decisions and they're going to be wrong in someone's mind. So there's no way to make every single person happy or understand, but what we're trying to do is slow the spread of this virus. That's all we're trying to do. I would like to hear what the plan would be. I think that, I want to be cognizant of your time. I know that you guys are working very hard, but I just want to make sure that people know these are not easy decisions to make. These are the most gut-wrenching decisions of my life. I have heard from a lot of folks as well, and I hope that people will understand that we do these things, or I specifically am making these decisions based on recommendations from our health professionals at all levels. And that's why I'll be voting the way I vote today.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. There's been a motion and a second to table this item permanently. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
No. So the motion fails. I have, I am skeptical that two weeks from now, there'll be anything that would be breaking.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think it passed, did it not? We had three yes votes for Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Dennis, and Commissioner Howell.
Yes, it did pass.
It passed.
It passed to table it.
To table it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, I, yes, I meant to vote no. Correct, I meant to vote no. Okay. The motion then passed, three to two. Okay. Moving on. My mistake, public, I'm sorry.
Okay. You ready to go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay. Emily is going to pass out some handouts for you. Again, this is discussion on the CARES spending plan. We need a little bit of direction from the commission as to how to proceed with a distribution model as well as an allocation model. So again, I promised you that we would start each of these deep dives with this slide. So again, it is, we received 99.6 million. Of that 99.6 million, the spending plan that you all approved earlier in July allocated 3.5 million dollars for K through 12 schools. I'm not going to hit on the use of CRF funds because we just covered that. So a number of questions have come up already about what type of funding has been received by school districts. So I just wanted to put this in at the very beginning for context of this discussion. So what this slide illustrates is the amount of funding that came from the CARES Act through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So this is a separate pot distinct from the Coronavirus Relief Fund that we received for the 99.6 million. So you can see by school district how much they received. Now, this table looks a little different than the discussions we've had before. In the past, we have looked at private schools in the aggregate. Since then, to try and refine this a little more, we went out and actually polled the accredited schools through the Kansas State Department of Education. That had been a recommendation that we received, that we use that accredited basis. And so this lists all of the school districts and accredited schools in the state of Kansas. And the list surprised me somewhat. And so I'm happy to provide any additional details or answer any questions if you have about, questions about specific schools that may or may not be on this list. But this is what I was able to find as the definitive accredited versus unaccredited schools. So what this shows is that within our community, we've received about 20.4 million dollars from that ESR fund. The italicized text to the left illustrates some examples directly from the guidance that was put out at the federal level about how that funding can be used. PPE, cleaning and sanitizing materials, and similar supplies necessary to keep schools in operation. However, they also use the words that they encourage schools to use the funding for remote learning activities for all students, especially disadvantaged or at-risk students. And so that, just as a reminder, was the driver for the way this funding was allocated, was Title I funding. So basically, it ties back to the at-risk and poverty level type information that schools provide. So there is enhanced funding to those school districts with higher rates of poverty or at-risk students. Now, one other thing to keep in mind is that both the HEROES Act and the HEALS Act each include at least $100 billion for education. Those range, the specific allocations range from 70 million upwards of 90 million for K through 12, depending on the program, though they're funneled differently. So certainly still some funding yet to come to schools. So this list here shows you the school districts and accredited schools. It gives you the student count and the percent overall of the population of school kids here that we are responsible for in Sedgwick County. Just as a reminder, we do have 20 school districts that actually cross into the boundaries of Sedgwick County. But the way the state Spark Force set up the resolution that we signed and all other counties have signed basically puts the responsibility for those school districts that are headquartered in the county on that county. So these are the ones that are headquartered officially within Sedgwick County. So we have two decision points. Yes, sir.
Lindsay, I'm not a school expert, but private schools like collegiate, Trinity, independent, they're not accredited.
They are not. So I specifically pulled the, the list. They are listed on the non-accredited private elementary and secondary school list.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
I triple-checked on that one.
Thank you.
So we have a number of options for how to allocate. We also have some options to discuss about how, when to distribute. So for purposes of simplicity, we're going to talk about how to allocate as 1 through 6 and options to distribute as A through C so that we can come up with a directive, hopefully, today on how to do this. So, and I apologize, I didn't update this, it says five options, you really have six. One option is flat dollar per student with no reserve setback. We would essentially allocate all of our dollars on an equal basis across districts. The next would be to do a flat dollar per student, but to hold back about 25% and allow that funding to be allocated by application. But when we actually did that math last night, Brent and I were talking and thought that number seemed awfully high as a reserve. So we modified and added a third option that has 10% reserve for application and distributes a little bit more. The next option is a flat rate per student, but giving each entity $100,000, although I think we want to talk about doing that since some are districts and some are just outright schools. And so we would want to have a little bit of discussion on that methodology. The fifth approach would be that we do a tier approach based on size, where basically we would have four tiers. The biggest school district, so Wichita, of course, is the, as you can see on the slides, they are the outlier by far compared to other schools and districts. So they would receive half as much as the smallest districts. The smallest district receives twice as much as the largest district. And hold back a modest reserve for allocation. And then finally, not allocating anything on a per pupil basis, but have them all submit applications. So quickly, we've talked through the methodologies, but these next few slides illustrate how that would look for each of these entities. So option one would be just a straight $37.71 per pupil. And you can see that that would leave Wichita receiving 1.9 million. And then you can see the smallest public school district of Cheney getting about $30,000 in that model. And again, that would allocate the full 3.5 million. Option two is to do essentially the same thing, but instead of allocating it all, setting aside 25% of that for a reserve that would go through an application process so that if there was a higher level of need for some district versus another, they would have an opportunity to come and seek that funding. And so that would be roughly $28 per student. That would be 1.4 million for Wichita. And again, looking at the smallest public school district, about 23,000 for Cheney. Or, yes, I'm sorry. Option three is a 10% reserve. So you can see that's only $350,000. That increases that dollar amount per pupil to about $34. Option four basically would give $100,000 per entity and then basically do $21.55 per pupil. And so you can see how that shakes out on a per student basis. That only leaves about $95 in a reserve, but I wanted to be honest in the math. Option five then would be looking at it based on size. You can see to the right of this slide what those dollars would be, $30 for, per student for Wichita, $60 per student for those districts, less than 1,000. I am not going to stand here and tell you that I had any great science for determining these tiers. I looked at the numbers and tried to do some, some calculations, but everything that is derived from doing like a standard deviation and things on a difference of 800 students to 49,000 students just looked absurd. So this was an approach that I thought seemed reasonable. Option six, of course, wouldn't allocate anything specifically, would be by application only. So those are the funding strategies. We can talk about those, or we can move to the discussion about how to actually make those allocations. I can...
Lindsay, you gave us quite a bit here.
I know. I'm sorry.
Option four, can I ask, just to make sure, that, that second column from the right, that's 100, it's supposed to be 100,000 plus 21?
Right, per pupil.
Right.
So it would be a minimum of 100,000, and then you would take your student count times 21.55 each, and that would give you the figure you see there.
All right. Well, let's have some questions and then, do you have a feeling that you're going to share with us after you get questions?
I, if, option one is, is probably the one that seems to align the most with how Coronavirus relief funds were allocated in the first place. They were allocated on a per-population basis. That is how we have chosen to do the cities. And so I also think, though, that there is a distinction between cities and school districts because school districts do receive additional funding from other sources, and that funding varies. Obviously, we even know that the state funding model to fund schools varies based and takes into account different weightings. So I'm inclined toward option one for the ease and simplicity from the equity So, I'm inclined toward option one for the ease and simplicity from the equity perspective and in terms of looking at it from the Coronavirus Relief Fund. But I think it also makes sense to try and look at a staggered model, to the extent that small school districts probably don't have the same buying capacity that large ones do, may not have the same level of cash flow to open. There was a call, and Commissioner Dennis can certainly speak to this, probably better than I can, but there was a call of some superintendents last week. We did hear from most that they preferred the pure pupil, but I do know that there was feedback from another where that wasn't remotely going to be enough. And so, I think we also want to try and be responsive to those needs, which is where potentially a reserve process may try and meet both needs.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You have a couple of questions here, Lindsay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I didn't get a chance to talk to Lindsay yesterday directly, so I don't think that we communicated very well. One of the concerns that I have is that there is a vast difference in our school districts. And some of them have received very large amounts of money, and some of them have received very small amounts of money. Some of them operate one school, some of them operate six or seven schools with a small number of students in each one, so it costs more to be able to take care of those small schools. So, when I'm saying that I didn't talk with Lindsay accurately last night, my thought was giving a base state aid kind of thing, like we do on the state side, of $100,000. But what we didn't communicate was that I did not intend for her to list organizations that have 30, 40, 100 students, and that throws the entire formula out of balance. So, my preference is to take a look at option four, but just leave those four schools that are independent schools at whatever the student count number is based on what's remaining. So, if we take a look at the 10 major school districts that we've got that are headquartered here, and we gave each one of them $100,000, then that gives the smaller schools a little bit of additional funding. That 10 schools would subtract $1 million off, leave 2.5 million, take the other 2.5 million, divide it up equally between all of the schools by pupil number. And that, it does include the four small independent schools at the bottom and gives them enough money that they can start getting ready for school. As Lindsay said, that we did talk with the superintendents last week, and the one thing that they wanted to know is how much that they're going to get and when they're going to get it. So, I don't believe that we need a reserve. I think that we can go ahead and distribute all of the funding at one time, the $3.5 million, so that they know what they're getting, and they're getting it right away, because they're trying to get schools open. And so, the way that we do that is to get the money in their hands as soon as possible. So, I, as I said, I think we did not communicate, because we didn't even talk about these four schools with 30, 40 people in them when I was communicating with Lindsay. So, I think that option four is the right way to go, other than the fact that I do not believe that four schools, the bottom should get the $100,000, they should get the balance. So, I know there's more discussion, so I won't make a motion yet, but that's the direction I'm leaning. Thank you.
Okay.
May I make one comment really quickly on that? I apologize.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Dennis, I pulled up the Excel spreadsheet. This is what that would look like in that model, if we took out the 100,000 for these and then allocated, I'm sorry, allocated the 2.5 million per, just based on the student needs. So, it would be $26.94 per student, and then you can see how that varies across the other districts, and I can make that lots bigger.
Can you highlight which column you want us to for sure look at?
These two here.
Oh gee, these two?
Instead of the base of basically $21.55 per student, it would be $26.94 per student, so an increase of about $5 per kid.
Okay. Thanks for doing that. That's quick math. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Excel is great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was initially very supportive of number two or three having a little bit of a reserve, but we do have a resident expert on school districts with Commissioner Dennis on the bench. I don't think anybody has as long of a history and connection, so if that's his suggestion on number four, I'll be happy to support that as well. So, thank you for all your work on this, Commissioner Dennis.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So, with this model, though, we're saying that per student for Wichita is $28.96. Per student for Derby would be $40.42. You know, Cheney, each student for them is $151.47. I personally am under the thought that each child should be considered, I mean, I don't understand why we would give, why we wouldn't just make it equitable across for per-pupil basis. So, I am in favor of number one, because I think that is the most equitable way to allocate this money, considering that that's how the CARES funding was originally allocated in the beginning. So, I would have to stick with that model.
Lindsay, I apologize for interrupting. There, you finished? I'm sorry, Lindsay.
I am finished. I don't know if you heard that I am in favor of option one.
Yeah, I do.
And allocating things equally amongst each student.
I'm just trying to do, I'm trying to analyze, under Commissioner Dennis's theory, the top 10 student-count schools would get the 100,000 plus whatever? Well, it looks like, to me, did you just take the, did you just go 259, just do those top 10? Because...
So, each...
So, Cheney, what I'm saying is, like, it's probably fairly right, except that Cheney is 803 students?
So, what the formula would do here is it takes 803 students times $26.94 as one act, and then it adds $100,000 on top of that.
Right. And I think that there's a, I think like Catholic Diocese is 7,000. Is it in there?
That would not receive the $100,000.
Because they're not...
I had understood it was just going to be the public schools that got the 100,000. Do you want...
No. I only intended to eliminate the bottom four schools.
Okay. Then, then we can fix that. This is easy. That is why Excel is the best thing ever.
So, we would not be giving anything to the bottom five?
No, we would be.
Per student?
Per student.
They would not receive that base of 100,000. They would receive strictly aid per student. And I think the distinction there is, my understanding of each of those is they operate one building. These others operate multiple buildings, I think, is my understanding of Commissioner Dennis's intent in formulating this recommendation.
And just to clarify, Commissioner, there's 10 school districts in Sedgwick County whose home base is here. And then, the 11th now is the Catholic Diocese, which is a large population of kids. So, I think that's, to your point, Commissioner, that's your, and all 11 of them would receive 100,000. And then, anything thereafter would be per capita, per student.
Per student, right. That's clear. Commissioner Dennis, but Commissioner Cruz has a comment also? Commissioner Cruz?
Well, I think I'd like to hear what Commissioner Dennis has to say.
Commissioner Dennis?
Very good. Well, thank you. Again, every school district is different. Every school district has different numbers of students, at different numbers of buildings, and that's what my concern is, is that we have to be able to get these small school districts the funding that they need in order to be able to safely open the doors. And by putting $100,000 on the major school districts, and that's the top 11, I'm sorry, or 11 that we've got there, that takes a look across the board at the differences between them. If we just go straight by per student, it, for example, Rinwick, I can speak to that, because I've talked to the superintendent several times about it. She's operating six different buildings out in a very small school district, and she's got to go through and sanitize six different buildings. If we give her the same per pupil as we give to Wichita, or Derby, or any of these other large school districts, she's at a disadvantage on getting the funding that she needs to be able to open her buildings up. So, that's why even when you're looking at state aid for different categories, they start off with state, base state aid, and then they add based on what the needs are out there. And that's why I looked at a kind of a base of 100,000 for the districts with the major school districts, and then what, that takes 110,000 now, or 1.1 million, I get my math right. And then, the balance of that gets divided equally among all of the school districts to make it fair to all the school districts. But there are differences between a school district on the number of buildings that they operate, and there are differences in how, the amount of money that they've already received. Wichita's already received $18 million. They're still going to get the bulk of the funding from this. What we're going to give them here is a rounding error based on what they get, because right now, they got a $750 million or so budget, and we just got another $18 million. So, the impact on a huge school district like that is completely different than the impact on all of my little school districts that I've got out in my county, in my district. So, that's why I believe that this is the fairest way to go. And again, I believe that we need to get it to them now, rather than hold anything back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that, Commissioner. Commissioner Cruz?
So, was the $100,000, I mean, where did you come with $100,000?
What I was trying to do was get more money into the smaller school districts that have a large number of buildings, a small number, smaller number of students. So, this...
Is that a number that you just pulled out of the air, or was it like based on any, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering. It seems like 100, we're just going to throw $100,000 in this pot. I guess I'm wondering where you got, where you decided $100,000.
A million dollars divided by 11. But originally, I was thinking of taking a million dollars out and dividing it up. As Commissioner O'Donnell said, I forgot about the 11th school district there, and then that left 2.5 million. Now, it leaves 2.4 million.
Okay.
I think we're making pretty big decisions, and, you know, as, I mean, we're kind of going back and forth, and I absolutely agree that we need to do this very quickly, but I also want to make sure that we're doing it methodically, that we, you know, aren't just drag and dropping numbers in a spreadsheet. So, I mean, I would make a motion, we would table this for one week, figure out exactly what we need to do as far as if it's, you know, if it's a million dollars divided by 11, which is not what we've done here.
That is what we did now.
Okay, so what we did now, but...
No, we did 1.1 million divided by 11.
So, I'm just not comfortable with this, and so that, it just makes me uneasy when we're talking about a large sum of money. This is directly affecting our children in all areas of our county. So, that, to me, is a very important decision to make and one that I don't want to make right this second, giving all these changes, all these options. This is the first that I've seen this. And so, for me, I'd like to take one more week to really look this over and make sure that we're doing it as methodically and as thought out as possible. So, for me, I would like to make a motion that we table this for one week, come back at our special meeting next week, and make a vote on this. And who knows, maybe I'll, you know, after more discussion with school districts, after more discussion, maybe this is the best option. But I don't feel comfortable today making this decision.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I think it should be out there and reminded to everyone that Commissioner Dennis wasn't just a teacher, but he was also on the State Board of Education. He was chairman two different times. He is in frequent contact with the Education Commissioner, Dr. Watson. He is in frequent contact with school board members from multiple school districts across the county. I don't think there's anyone in Sedgwick County more qualified to help guide these decisions than Commissioner Dennis, and I don't think anybody's resume would even come close to his knowledge and his background. So, I just believe we need to, we need to remind everyone watching about Commissioner Dennis's credentials, because he's too humble, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your last motion didn't get a second, so I'd make a motion...
Commissioner, I'll, out of courtesy, I'll second the motion to delay. Is this substitute, I assume it's a substitute motion?
Thank you. Well, then, I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we approve the funding option that I presented, which is a modification of, I think, of number four, and that we distribute the money as soon as that we can possibly do it.
Motion is seconded. Commissioner Howell?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would also second that motion. I think the reality is that these schools need to have some time to plan, schools just around, or I think, consider we clarify what we're going to do to provide help to them, the more usable this money is we're going to get, actually, the schools start this year. Secondly, it does make sense to me that smaller school districts actually do have overhead that is different from larger school districts. So, I believe that based on, I understand that Commissioner Dennis has participated slightly with these school board superintendents across the community. There's been a pretty general consensus acceptance of this idea. And again, I think I trust, I think it's reasonable to trust Commissioner Dennis to lead on this issue, and I think that this motion makes a lot of sense.
I apologize.
Okay.
My microphone was off. I just wanted to, I guess I'll repeat myself, so that people could hear the comments.
We heard it.
I don't need to hear, I don't need to repeat myself. All right. Whatever, listen, I think that Commissioner Dennis, his motion does make a lot of sense. I'm glad I supported that this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's been a motion in this, or been some substitute motions in a second, but the latest one is to go with the plan that Commissioner Dennis has proposed. It's been seconded. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Lindsay, so you have your direction on that.
And we're distributing 100% in advance, correct, from, based on the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, I am done with that, and we can transition to my final portion of today's presentation. I am struggling to find my sheet and all of my documents here. Well, I apologize. I will give you a quick update. We are up about $2.5 million in spending since the last time we spoke. I think Tom had asked for us to address that today, because the bulk of that... I think Tom had asked for us to address that today because the bulk of that, about $2.3 million, was for testing. For that, we received two what are called Panther Fusion machines that were at $220,000 each. We were able to purchase warranties on each of those. We were able to purchase the startup kits for each of those. And then we purchased enough supplies between swabs and reagents to fund 55,000 tests. So you may recall that part of the discussion was how much testing we could buy and this actually dovetails nicely into what the WSU presentation was about trying to prepay for things. Whit O'Brien's advised that because we are the ones running the tests, we were able to purchase the stock that we thought would last us through December 30th only. The original request actually had been to fund 52 weeks worth of testing supplies. Would advise that that would not be in concert with the guidance that has come out. In addition, we had sought maybe to try and purchase some flu supplies, recognizing the distinction that was not approved by Whit O'Brien's. So the purchase that was done should be enough to stand up the testing capabilities for the health department. It does not yet resolve the additions for the testing. The rest of the increase from last week to this week that brought us just above $6 million in total spending was largely related to the payroll that was posted last Friday. We have started to spend a considerable amount on the temporary positions that we have added in health and finance. And then we have one in HR. We've also been able to use some of that funding to assist with departments that are basically loaned out to other, to the health department for support. So for example, the sheriff's office was able to use staff to patrol the tent that was over on West Central and so those costs have been incurred as well, just as an example. So that is where we stand with our spending and I will follow up with an email with the specifics and I apologize for not being able to find that.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I, we have made a couple of votes now on how to spend this money and I have not heard one time what the stimulus review board has recommended. I mean, we specifically selected community members to help us make these decisions and I've not heard from them one time.
So the external, that is a group that has been set up to review the external spending. So everything we have talked about so far has been out of the county's roughly $60 million allocation. And so we have a separate internal process for those internal spending requests and review. There's actually a CARES funding process. There's a team internally that reviews expenses up to $10,000 that are atypical and approves those. Up to $50,000 goes to Tom for approval and then anything greater than $50,000 we bring to you for approval. The stimulus review team can actually now go into action. We do have the application up for social services and public health. The reimbursement requests that are generated from the school district and the private business, all of those expenses will, once those applications start coming in, will go through the internal risk assessment and evaluation and eligibility screening and then it will go to that federal stimulus review team. And so there's a timeline that's been set up. They will be meeting, as I understand it, the Thursday before your August 12th meeting, so August 7th. And they will be reviewing that first round of applications that has now come in from the social service and public health. But we had designed that group to be the external facing entity and because it's taken us a bit to get that process set up, that spending is plain approved and decisions like this, they just haven't had anything to review yet. They have had training. I was able to participate in some of that last week on conflict of interest and other things. And so we're making good progress and I apologize that it doesn't feel like that.
No need to apologize. I just, I was under the impression that that stimulus review team would help us spend all of these dollars. And so I guess that's where I misunderstood. So I thank you for clearing that up. And my microphone was not on, so I asked about the stimulus review team and why they are not helping us make these decisions and I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
So we need, any other questions about this? Need a motion to approve this spending?
No, this is a receive and file.
Just to receive and file, right? Okay, that's right. Thank you. Motion to receive and file. Been a motion a second. Any other questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other, Madam Clerk, next item? I don't think there is any. Okay. Our agenda is done for the day. Any other comments the commissioners want to have? Okay, a lot of information received today and public. Thanks for tuning in and we will continue to trudge on through this minor crisis we're facing. We stand adjourned.